The time is 6:00 PM and the regular meeting of the City Council of Denison, Texas is now in session. We are honored this evening to have Jean Emerson, pastor of New Beginnings Fellowship Church, who will lead us in our invocation.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we give you praise. We thank you, Father, your presence here. We ask your blessing over us tonight. We thank you for this city. We thank you, Father, for the elected officials, and we thank you, Father, for all those that govern over us, and we thank you, Father, for your wisdom and your strength that you've given them. I pray tonight that your peace would be here, that you would establish us with joy, and I just ask, Father, that there be abundant grace in our meeting tonight. Thank you, each one that's here. Pray your peace and protection over us, and we ask your presence over us now. In the powerful name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
This evening, Chief Mike Gudge will lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Can you join in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one individual.
Thank you both. This evening, I have the honor of recognizing a very special group. I want to read you a short press release. The Public Library of Denison, Texas has received the 2023 Achievement of Library Excellence Award from the Texas Municipal Library Directors Association, an affiliate of the Texas Municipal League. To successfully receive the Achievement of Library Excellence Award, the library must exhibit excellence by providing services to underserved and special populations, enhancing services, marketing in innovative ways promoting cultural, topical, and educational programming, providing literacy support, providing summer reading clubs, pursuing collaborative efforts, supporting workforce development, providing for digital inclusion, and comprehensively training staff. I think this is a very important next line. Of the 545 public libraries in the state of Texas, only 84 received this award in 2023, and our library was one of them. When I ask if Greg Mitchell would tell us some of the programs that they're operating that would set them apart from others, and I thought these were very, very impressive. Our Monster Trail is a family-friendly event at Halloween that started as a way to get people out again after COVID. It has become a major event for us with more than 300 in attendance each year. Our Story Walk, and if you haven't experienced the Story Walk, please do. Our Story Walk programs are a great collaborative outreach program that we do with Parks and Rec at the THF Park. We do several story and craft events each year in the great outdoors. In other words, they expanded the walls of the library to include the park. Our Read to Win program for early literacy is phenomenal. Along with our children's program in the library, we had nearly 45,000 in attendance at our programs last year. I think these show without a doubt that our library is deserving of this recognition. And if Greg Mitchell, Steve McCowen, Deborah Wise, Zoe May, Kimberly Parks, Karen Breimer, and Carrie Borgans would join me at the podium, I have a very special award. I'm going to put that down because that's not very attractive. Okay. It reads Achievement of Excellence in Libraries Award. 2023 Achievement of Library Excellence Presented to Denison Public Library, awarded by the Texas Municipal Library Directors Association. Congratulations to all of you. This is a magnificent award, and it shows lots and lots of artwork. So thank you for all that you did. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. At this time in every meeting, we set aside time for any citizen to speak on any agenda item listed on the agenda as an action item. In order to speak, you must fill out a request to speak card by the time we reach this point in our meeting. We do have one card tonight from Laura Fulencheck. Ms. Fulencheck, do you want to speak now, or do you want to speak when we get to that item? Just please understand that AstroTurf is not on the agenda tonight.
Only the contract, the maximum guaranteed price is on the agenda, but if you wish to speak, you may, and you have three minutes.
I am the Lorax. I speak for the trees. In Heritage Park, there are 21 trees that provide air for us to breathe, and I believe that they are going to be chopped down to put the AstroTurf. These 21 trees provide us with the cool shade necessary to escape the treacherous inferno of the hot Texas sun. Did you know that trees not only provide us with oxygen and shade, they also play a major role in the water cycle? According to an article by the World Economic Forum, transpiration is a well-known part of photosynthesis, where moisture is drawn up by plant roots, gathered on leaves, and evaporate into the atmosphere. The sheer amount of moisture released into the atmosphere helps make it rain. When there are enough trees, they pump so much moisture into the air that it changes the atmosphere, triggering a shift in wind patterns that brings in the moisture from the ocean. When one chops down the trees and removes vital elements of the ecosystem, it perpetuates global warming. It would be, in essence, turning our city into a desert. Even if you don't believe in climate change, global warming, or El Nino, there is evidence that plastic lawns overheat in hot weather and make them unusable. They're about 20 to 30 degrees hotter than just regular grass. It would be like sitting on the asphalt. Even if you feel that overconsumption of fossil fuels and global deforestation has nothing to do with the ice caps and the glaciers melting, bleaching of the coral reefs, mass extinction of species due to the temperatures of the ocean, even if you think that humans have no part in the temperature outside, you're going to find out one hot day in August, standing on that hot AstroTurf in the scorching fiery hot sun, wishing for a shade tree and praying to God to send the rain, even though that's not scientifically possible with no trees and no life. So I beg of you, do not execute the shade trees. Rather, instead of being a part of the problem, let's be a part of the solution. Let's make Denison green again, and let's make the summer cool again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fulencheck. Item four, consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
There is a motion by Mayor Procham Crowley and a second by Councilmember Thorne. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item five should not have made it to our agenda. The applicant actually withdrew the request for the zone change in the P&amp;Z meeting on 3/12/24, so this becomes moot, and the item requires no action by the council. Item six A, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on an amendment to the construction manager at risk contract with Piazza Construction for Phase Two of the Design Downtown Denison Project for a guaranteed maximum price of $23,320. Twenty-three million, three hundred and twenty. Don't we wish?
That's a good deal.
Twenty-three million, three hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars, and authorize the interim city manager to execute all related documents. Mr. Bates.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. The council approved the construction manager at risk, the C-MAR contract with Piazza Construction for Phase Two of Designing Downtown Denison on December 12th of 2022. This item admits the contract to include the guaranteed maximum price, GMP. The GMP for this project is $23,321,171. Funding will be provided by the following. Twelve million, $10,000, nine hundred and thirteen, twelve thousand, sorry, twelve million, $10,913 of the funding is coming from the property tax for downtown Denison through the tax increment reinvestment zone known as TURS number three. Eleven million, three hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars is coming from the Utility Capital Improvement Program funds. Both of those funds have been budgeted for this project, and the bid is within those budgeted lines. City staff, Hewitt Zollers engineers, Chris Lamka, associates, and Piazza Construction have worked together to develop construction plans for Phase Two of the D3 project. The project will include the 300 and 400 blocks of West Main and adjacent blocks of Music and Depot alleys, Bennett Avenue, including Heritage Park. New water lines, wastewater lines, street surfaces, sidewalks, landscape, hardscape, and more will continue from the first phase of the project into these next blocks for this project. Heritage Park will be redesigned with a new stage and a new building with a green room for the performers. Along with storage, staging equipment, and including lighting and sound system, the park's new look will pay homage to the historic railroad roundhouses used during Denison's past. Adjustments from Phase One of this project will include deeper on-street parking spaces. Access to buildings and homes will be maintained, and the construction schedule will allow for the 2024 Dark Holiday Festival to continue as planned. Construction is anticipated to take about 24 months, with the anticipated notice to proceed April 29th. I have with me tonight John Ho with Hewitt Zollers Engineering, Chris Lamka, the design engineer, and Rod White, and Chip with Piazza Construction, which is the C-MAR contractor. We are now available for any questions you might have.
Questions for Mr. Bates?
So with it being the maximum price, what if we wanted it to be lower? Like, what if, like, for instance, I'm more comfortable around, like, 20 million instead of 23 million? Is that something we can value engineer before we approve the price?
Let me, we did go through some value engineering. The first phase, or the first submittals from all of the bids were about $1.8 million higher, which was more than what we had budgeted. So we went back to the drawing board. We met with the engineers and the C-MAR contractor. We did some value engineering, and we got it down $1.8 million. Without, if you change it anymore, it's going to change the actual look and the expectation of what everybody's seen in the plans.
Yeah, I get that. It's just some of it, I think, came back higher than what the general population may think on, like, the replica train at $260,000. That's a big chunk when we have trains that are down at the depot that men and women from Denison built. So I think that's my fear, is that we're, we may need to look at some of those design choices. And so I don't know if that's the time we do this now, or if that's done after this is approved, or if this is approved, then that means that's all happening no matter what?
No, with the C-MAR project, you're able to, you're able to adjust things as we go to some, to some degree.
And I know there was the issue of the turf and the grass, and so this, while it says turf, doesn't mean we're going with turf?
No, sir. What we've done is we've taken, we've taken the higher cost of the two and put that in the budget, and so we're going to discuss that at a later time. We got the funds in there for whichever way we go, and so once we decide, then we'll, we'll have the funds for it.
The bulk of the increase in this Phase One cost $19 million. Construction materials are up more than 20%, and this includes Heritage Park. So
Yes, ma'am.
There has been a lot of work done to bring the price down and maintain the integrity of the design.
I can give you a list of things that is included in the bid and a few things that are not included in the bid, if that'll help.
Sure.
Okay. Some items that are included in the bid.
Mr. Bates, can I pause you for a second?
Yes, sir.
So I am a construction, I do contracts, no-risk contracts for my clients in, around the country. And with the inflation rates right now, our duration of contract is very narrow because of what we're risking going out and the unknowns that come. So the fact that we've got somebody that we can lock in for a 24-month look forward is really pretty excellent at this point. I mean, I've got general contractors I can't hire anymore, and the insurance companies aren't willing to back it or funded on a bond basis, so.
We are looking at about a 23% increase in materials and stuff from the last Phase One.
And at 3% unemployment, the labor costs are expected to go up sooner. I'm sorry, I interrupted.
That's all right.
Are there any other questions of Mr. Bates? Did I interrupt you? You were gonna...
Ma'am, I was just going to read a few of those, but if we need, if that's fine, I'm good.
You're fine.
What?
You're fine. Thank you.
Any further discussion from the council? A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the amendment to the construction manager at risk contract with Piazza Construction for Phase Two of the Denison, Designing Denison Downtown Project for a guaranteed maximum price of $23,321,171, and authorize the interim city manager to execute all related documents.
Second. There is a motion by Mayor Procham Crowley and a second by Councilmember Courtwright. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item six B, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on the 2022-2023 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report presented by Brooks Watson &amp; Company. Ms. Osseball.
Good evening. Each fiscal year, an independent audit is required by state statute for municipalities in Texas. The City of Denison has just completed its fiscal year 2023 annual audit. It is also referred to as the ACFER, which is an acronym for Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Lewis Breedlove, our audit manager with Brooks Watson &amp; Company, is here this evening to present our audit and to answer any questions that you may have.
Good evening, Council. Okay, great. My name is Lewis Breedlove, Senior Audit Manager at Brooks Watson. I had the pleasure of working with the City of Denison for the fiscal year 2023 annual audit. In front of you is a bound copy of the report. I don't know, you had received a draft copy of that in the agenda, because we were waiting on one item, but there have been no changes from that. The presentation that I'll have for you this evening will go over the results of the audit. First, I do always like to go over, from a high level, the aspects of the audit that we're conducting throughout the audit process. So first, there are various phases throughout the audit, the first phase being the assessment phase. So when we come in, we sit down with each department. Anywhere where money is coming in and going out, we're evaluating the processes that are in place. So we sit down with the folks in the department, get a walkthrough of what's being conducted in each department, as well as reviewing and reading through each documented process or policy manual that may exist for that department. And then, once we've done that, we also do a sample testing over each of those areas to ensure that what we have seen through that walkthrough is consistent with what's done in practice. And once we've done that, if we see any areas for potential improvement, efficiency issues, or anything like that, we would bring that to management's attention at that time. I'm happy to say that you all have quite an extensive process where there's several layers of controls and segregation duties, and so we're very pleased with where the City of Denison is in that regard. So there were no recommendations made over that. Next, we move into our risk-based approach. So what that is, is each financial statement line item within the financial statements has a different type of risk. We evaluate those annually, and that, because they can change from year to year. And so as we evaluate each line item, it will dictate and drive what type of procedures we need to perform over each of those areas, what level of detail we need to perform those, so that way we are comfortable with the material accuracy of your financials when the audit is completed. Then we do what's called the compliance testing. Those can be things such as your bid requirements, any grant requirements. We read all council meeting minutes, so if you all approve something during a meeting that has a compliance component, we're looking to see if the city's in compliance with that, and Public Fund Investment Act, things of that nature. Next, we move into the actual field work. So that's going to be after you're in, after the books have been closed for the year, where we start testing the balance sheet and income statements. So we confirm with third party wherever possible and perform cutoff procedures to ensure that everything that's supposed to be in the fiscal year is there. As we're testing and tying out the balance sheet, we're also testing the material accuracy of your revenues and expenditures. Once we've done all testing procedures, we move into our conclusion reporting phase. So it goes through multiple layers of review to ensure there's no additional procedure necessary, and then we have the report and the letters that go with the report prepared for you that we have for you this evening. Next, just to go over the components of the audit report, there's the introductory section. That's going to have your transmittal letter and other information related to the city. Behind that's your financial section, so that's going to include your auditor's opinion letter. That's our opinion over the financials. Behind that's your management's discussion analysis, which is going to give you some year-to-year comparison, as well as give you some additional highlights over high-level areas such as capital, budget, debt, things of that nature. Behind that's your financial statements. That's going to include your full accrual, as well as your fund-level statements, and then the notes to the financial statements are behind that, which is going to give you a lot of detail pertaining to those numbers in your financial statements, to help you have a better understanding of what all is included in those statements. Behind that's your supplementary information, such as TMRS activity and things of that nature, and then your statistical section, which is going to give you multiple layers of information over the past 10 years, historical data, to help provide additional transparency over the city's financials over the past 10 years. As it relates to that first item under the financial section, the auditor's opinion letter, there are four opinion types that we are able to issue as auditors. There's the unmodified, qualified, disclaimed, or the first opinion. The city did receive an unmodified opinion, often referred to as a clean opinion. That's the highest level of assurance that we as auditors are able to provide. I also just want to point out, the city did receive the certificate again this year, and we fully expect the city to receive it again. That is an award that's received by cities who go above and beyond in the level of reporting that's done to ensure that citizens are able to see a level of transparency otherwise not done. Next, just to go over a few highlights for the financials comparing year to year. Overall, net position citywide has gone up by 7.9 million, primarily due to just the significant growth in infrastructure that we see. This has been consistent year to year. We've seen quite a bit of growth over the years with the City of Denison. Looking at your overall governmental fund balances, there's a breakdown here for the increase over general fund, both restricted portion and unassigned portion of fund balance. Overall, the restricted portion, we saw a decrease of 1.5 million, utilization of some restrictions there. And then your unassigned portion, overall, we had an increase in fund balance of 2.5 million. And that's, as you'll see, we'll go over the budget results, primarily due to revenue coming in better than expected and also staying under budget on various departmental expenses. As it relates to the general interest sinking fund, we saw an overall increase there of 1.1 million. And then your other non-major funds, which is going to be all the various special revenue funds, we saw an overall decrease of 2.1 million in fund balance. And those are all social use funds, which are restricted for the various intended purposes. So they're all being, they're all in line and consistent with our expectations there. As it relates to proprietary funds, so that's going to be your utility-type funds, those operate more like a business, and so we evaluate them accordingly. We look to see, is it a self-sustaining fund? And so, looking at overall operations, there is an overall net operating income of 7.2 million, and that's an increase from last year by 538,000. So it is a self-sustaining activity. As it relates to the net position for the fund, the unrestricted portion is 4.8 million for 2023, and that's a down by 2.6 million from the previous year. Next, looking at the budget and fund balance for the general fund specifically, the city did have an unassigned fund balance of 29% of unassigned expenses, or general fund expenses for the year. So we're looking at the fund balance. We look to see, how far would you be able to operate in that next year, assuming expenses were consistent throughout the year compared to this past year, and no additional funds were received. So the city does have a goal of between 60 and 90 days. That would be, I'm sorry, about 30 to 50% of the year. So we're within that, or, let me do some quick math. Oh, sorry, 25% and 16%. So we're above the 29. We're above that range at 29%. So we're meeting the city's policy there. Then as it relates to the budget results, this is a high-level view of the budget that's in the report. Budget revenues did come in over expectations by 2.7 million. Your expenditures had come in under budget by 4.3 million. And then, other sources and uses, that's going to be capital contributions, transfers, things of that nature, had an overall positive variance of 44,000. So all in all, had a net positive budget variance of 7.1 million. Next, the communication letter. So there are two letters that come with the audit report. The first audit, the first letter being the communication with those charged with governance. There are various information, various information that relates to our responsibility as auditors, management's responsibility with the city as it pertains to the audit. And there are a few things I always like to pull out from that letter. One, the audit was conducted in compliance with all ethics requirements regarding independence. Two, we had no difficulty encountering working with management, and then three, there were no uncorrected misstatements identified. Next, there's a communication regarding internal controls. This is where we would be listing out any control concerns and findings. We did recommend, just due to the number of journal entries at the end of the year, just due to a lot of specific things that we, as we identify throughout the audit, that was the only recommendation, is to slowly dwindle that number of journal entries down, which we are seeing, we saw improvements since last year. So, and have been very pleased with the steps taken by OS Finance Department in taking more control of those journal entries to where there are fewer each year. So that was the only recommendation on that letter, as well as just some information for new gathering pronouncements that are coming as it relates to the reporting of compensated absences that will be affected at the end of next year. And with that, I'll open up to any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Breedlove? Thank you so much. Lori and team, congratulations on another outstanding year and another award.
My contact information is there, so if you think of any questions after this meeting, please don't hesitate to reach out.
Thank you. Pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, the council reserves the right to convene an executive session from time to time as deemed necessary, but tonight it is not necessary. So with there being no further business to come before this board, the time is...
Mayor, if you could take a motion to accept the audit.
Oh, I guess I was in a hurry. Okay, this is receive a report and hold a discussion. All right. Discussion from council. A motion. A motion.
Mayor, I move to accept the 2022-2023 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report as presented by Brooks Watson &amp; Company.
Second. There is a motion by Mayor Procham Crawley and a second by Councilmember Thorne. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Now, there is no necessity for an executive session. The time is 6:30, and this council stands adjourned.